Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 9th meeting of the Select Board here at the Lakeville Senior Center. LakeCam is recording. Is anybody else recording at this time? All right, meeting's called at order, so first thing, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and just as.
Thank you. All right, so meeting's called at order at 5:35. All right, first order of business, Select Board announcements. I guess that would be me here. So, a little note from the town clerk, a reminder that dog licenses are due by April 30th. If you no longer have your dog, please let the town clerk's office know. Just give them a call, or if you're in the area, just drop in and let them know. Election just happened, but we still have quite a few vacancies on some of our boards, committees, and commissions. So if you do have any interest whatsoever, you can reach out to any of your officials to get some information on it, or contact the Select Board's office. Right now, we have Cable Advisory Committee, the Capital Expenditure Committee, and that would be an appointment made by the town moderator, the Cemetery Commission, Conservation Commission, Energy Advisory Committee, Parks Commission, Lakeville Arts Council, and the Open Space Committee. So if there's any interest whatsoever, just, you know, reach out to one of your elected officials or the Select Board's office. Just a little fun fact for Lakeville here. Lakeville was settled in 1717, play that number tonight or tomorrow, as a western parish of Middleborough. It was a long trip for settlers of the outlying area to get to the Middleborough Townhouse by foot or by horse to do town business. So the settlers back in that time made a few attempts to become their own, have their own little town, and on May 13th, 1853, Lakeville was incorporated as its own separate town. There you go. I'd like to give a little shout-out to our library director, Jennifer Jones, and our youth services librarian, Teresa Mura, for stepping up. We had a meeting at the library not too long ago, and there were, you know, quite a few participants that had, you know, shown up, and they jumped right to it and, you know, tried to set up a TV for, you know, overflow, and I know that was a little bit of outside there, the normal activities on a, on an evening, but I just wanted to give them a little shout-out because they really jumped up to try to accommodate the crowd, so thank you for that. The Free Town Lakeville Regional School District will be conducting a survey at some point soon as they prioritize improvements for the five district schools, so stay tuned for that, and we'll just keep you updated here. I'm sure that there'll be a link at some point on our town website, you know, for that, so I just wanted to give everybody a heads-up. Anybody else from the board? You guys have anything that's happened this week that you'd like to?
Yeah, so with the eclipse yesterday, I do know that the library put together a really nice, I went by to pick up glasses on Monday, Monday, yesterday, and they had the whole NASA feed going live in the big room, and there was, I knew something was up, I didn't know they were doing it, but I thought that was really great. They had a whole bunch of people there, they were sharing the live feed, and then also here at the Senior Center, they did something for the seniors, and they kind of put it all together. I know Lori's staff put it together really quickly here. I thought that was great.
No, I mean, those are really, there was a lot of people, too, at the library, so it was nice to see all the community interests there.
Yeah.
So thank you again to Jen and to Lori here from the Senior Center for doing that.
Let's turn it over to town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one item from my TA report. Some weeks ago, we had a meeting with MassDOT for an update on the Route 79 project, at the meeting with representatives of Beta Group, MassDOT, Attorney Eichmann from KP Law, and DPW Director. So we talked about the project and where it stands now. It's a $20 million project. It consists of 2.5 miles. It is funded by municipal, state, and federal. The feds have taken up 80%, state is picking up 20%, and the town of Lakeville is picking up the cost for design and land takens. There are 286 parcels of land involved. Those include parcels owned by property owners as well as permanent and temporary easement. There are 87 property owners where land takens will be involved. All 87 property owners will receive a visit this summer for an interview during the months of July and August. So there are 87 property owners that will be contacted along Route 79 within the 2.5-mile project. The work will start in the spring of 2026. It's on the fiscal year '25 tip program, and it's a three-to-five-year project. So that is an update on the Route 79 project. Obviously, our DPW Director, Frank Bumley, is heavily involved, and if there are any changes, I'm sure he will let us all know.
Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions?
I do. So when you say they'll get a visit, explaining things or just?
Yes, yes. They're in the process of hiring either a company or someone, an individual, to visit all the property owners and to have a discussion of what the process is, yes. They're also in the process of hiring an appraisal company. Obviously, because all the parcels need to be appraised if we're not able to.
That's nice, actually. Yeah. Well, I'm sure we'll get more updates as we get closer to them. All right, so next item, so we need to discuss, possibly vote on, the assignment of the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan Act certifier and filer, and can Mr. Nunes, you can just update us on what this exactly means?
Sure. So we did have a conversation with Plymouth County, and they did give us a go-ahead to expend the remaining balance in the ARPA funding, which is a little over $800,000. But before we submit our list, we need to vote this evening to assign a Plymouth County ARPA certifier and filer. In my capacity as incoming town administrator, I will be the certifier, and Todd Hassett as the town accountant will be the filer. This is a procedural thing that is a requirement of the federal government, so we're asking you for a vote this evening.
There was something similar, Madam Chair, for cares money, wasn't there?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll read it in a second.
Please.
That the town administrator is authorized to approve, finalize, and submit on behalf of the town any such ARPA grant application, and to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town to complete each such application with such approval, representations and certifications to be evidenced by the signature of the town administrator on such application. And if such ARPA grant is awarded, the town administrator shall be the recipient of such grant on behalf of the town. The second half of the motion is that the town accountant is authorized to prepare and enter information into the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan portal in support of one or more applications to Plymouth County for grants, ARPA grants, to be funded for a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second, second. All right, so Leah, second. Any further discussion on these? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Fabian, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Todd, you, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay. Is that going to be our four? I don't, well, I figured maybe we'd just go around.
Yeah, I was just trying to remind the candido.
Okay, all right.
So I'll start then, okay?
Yep. Can I, you seconded it in that?
I did.
Thank you. No, this is going to just take us a little while to get used to.
Yeah, a little bit. We got it, we got it.
Input here. Okay, so next order of business, so we have a list of some items here that, it's just, the first page is a summary of the ARPA, I guess how we've gotten to where we are today, and then some capital projects, but, Ms. Nunes, if you wouldn't mind just kind of walking us through this?
Sure. So we have a balance of $818,384. Obviously, that's un-audited, but that is what we have going forward as a balance. There are a number of projects that we can move forward with. We would like to notify the county by the end of the month. You can see from the U.S. Department of Treasury what ARPA fundings, what ARPA funding is eligible for, various projects, spending on government services, and you have a list that was submitted by department heads that are not on the capital improvement plan. I'd like to have the Capital Expenditures Committee early next week. I think the capital budget is going to be discussed next week, so I'd like to have a Capital Planning Committee early next week so we can, when we discuss the capital budget before the Select Board, that, you know, we have some votes from the Capital Expenditures Committee.
So you're asking to just, at least, hold off on the vote to?
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't know if you want to vote this evening, or what projects you would like to see move forward out of the $800,000. I know the last time the Select Board voted on ARPA projects, from what I'm told, the Capital Expenditures Committee did not vote on the ARPA projects.
Right, okay.
So I'll leave it up to you, and we'll do what you would like.
Because I haven't seen the, you know, the updated capital listing, so I don't know what was, so none of these items were on, on that list, so.
We moved one from the list over onto the ARPA project. Well, we kind of changed it. That was the council on aging one, was that, that was on the other list.
Okay.
That was an addition, that was on the capital plan.
Yep.
But with that's been changed now to just an addition for the food pantry.
Yeah, so that one's changed over. So that came off of the capital plan, and we put it on the ARPA, yep.
Because it's basically a different project.
Yep.
And that, I'm sorry, in that project, it comes on aging food pantry, that will, like the Select Board member Fabian said at our last meeting, there are also several earmarks and grants that the city will have. That will contribute to the funding for that project.
Nice, yeah. Okay. So do we want to just sort of go through the list and figure out which ones, because the irrigation wells probably won't work?
That's correct, for Plymouth County.
For Plymouth County.
That is correct.
Okay.
I have significant comments on a lot of these as well, and just to get it out there, are we behind the Capital Expenditure Committee's input, consulting as well?
Yeah.
On the deadline that's approaching as well.
As long as we have the vote in by the end of the month.
Yeah, as long as we get anything by the end of the, Todd will notify Plymouth County of the votes this evening, authorizing the certifier and file, and that is the first step in the process. So that will be done this week. Todd is on Thursday, he will do that Thursday, and then, I mean, we have another meeting from the end of the month.
On the 22nd, so maybe it would just take this moment to discuss some of these as a group, and then hear back from the recognition of the.
Yeah, there was a couple when we met that, I think a couple of us were like, what's that exactly? So maybe that would help just shed some light right now on some of these, I don't know what, it sounds like Brian has probably some more organized questions, maybe. Maybe we go off of him.
Organized, huh? So this would be the page starting in capital project requests, right, starting with the towns councils. So I guess the first question we, well, here's a general question, a lot of these still have to be determined. Have we gotten numbers for any of these, or are those still?
Officially, no.
Okay.
I shouldn't say that. Chief O'Brien, I think, did receive quotes for his items. I don't believe the parks went out in that official quotes. The irrigation wells, that number did come from the DPW Director. The public works, those numbers, the resurface in Holland Road, Southworth and Leonard, that did come from the DPW Director. And the town hall roof, two small sections, I believe that did come from the facilities Director. And the food pantry did come from the facilities manager and the building commissioner, as an estimate, working with the Seaway Director.
All right, so Brian, what did you?
So, I mean, I mean, thank you for answering that. Anything that still had to be determined makes me nervous. We've got a bunch of projects that didn't have enough lately, and we had to go back, and this is a really situation where we can go back. I kind of made my comments departmentalized, so just alphabetically, fire is the first one, scuba fill stations, I didn't know if that's a want or a need, and if that's something we can integrate into the new station design or not, if it's critical, you know, $100,000, what would the return that investment be to cost us now? It's a big chunk of change for many other things we could use for. Similarly, for the prefab building, again, is that something we can integrate into the fire station project? Is that something multiple municipalities could use, who might want to chip in on? Permanent structure or mobile structure? I don't know the answer to both of the questions that came to mind. Those just seem like two really big ones, or it's like, we've got another whole project that's going, is that better suited there or not? I can keep going, this is a little foggy there. So let's see, next, irrigation wells, I think they've commented on because of what Leah said, since that's a tough one.
Yes.
So parks is next alphabetically. Skate park, $150,000, if that was a real number, if we have anything to back that up, again, I don't want to come back and find out we're 50,000 shy or, you know, and such, or 3,000 over, it's a wrong thing.
Madam Chair, now, if we are shy on it, there is no, is there a statute that says we have to pay for the project in total from this money, or can we use other funds as well?
I'm sure we can use other funds, yes.
Yes. Okay. So if it does come up that we are short, it would have to come out of free cash.
This is not the year to look for other funds.
No, but grants, yes.
If there's remaining ARPA funds, we could definitely use the ARPA funds, but if there's not, we'd have to, like you said, use other funding sources. In regards to the pavilion, that project will be going up to bid again. Most likely, it will be higher than the $38,000 or so, $40,000 that we estimated to come in at. We're using $10,000 from ARPA, $10,000 from the Friends of the Library, and $10,000 from the Arts Council. I'm pretty confident that the Arts Council, and I'm hopeful that the Arts Council and the Friends will continue to be supportive of the project and make that donation to the project, but most likely, it's going to come in higher than $40,000, so we will probably have to use ARPA funds to offset that.
And this is for the sound system and speakers, right?
And the sound system is not included as well.
All right, so the sound system is new. We need to pay for the sound system. It was coming from other funding, but I don't think that's gonna, that's gonna happen now, so we want to make sure we can have a decent sound system there.
Because it'll be utilized a lot, too.
And I'm not quite, I'm not sure if the old town hall restroom project, $183,700, if that included the restroom, the septic system, and the pavilion. I'm not quite sure on that.
I don't think they took the pavilion, but it definitely, I think it, I think it took care of the plumbing and all of that. I'm pretty sure it did, but.
So we may have to go back to Select Board minutes to see when that was discussed with the Select Board, what needs to include it.
Madam Chair. The pavilion's always been a separate project.
It has.
Yes.
But I don't see it on the county, so, or the federal. All right, we'll find out.
Brian, do you have more?
Oh, we got three pages.
Well, you have five minutes.
Oh, shoot, okay. So, what's next, parks, okay, so skate park we talked about. I was just thinking, a general comment, Clear Pond, we've been asking, or I thought we've been asking for like a master plan to consider ARPA funds for the last year, and I don't think we've seen that, but we now have at least a playground and basketball courts mentioned. We just spent $170,000 in the commas playground, realize it might not be that equal comparison, but I just get a little nervous seeing only $45,000 listed there. Does that include demolition of the existing one and removal? Same comment for the playground at John Pond Park, just whether or not that's a real number based on what we selected on.
Now, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say that those, the three projects for parks, you know, I think they may be underestimated based on other projects. I know they talked, they talked to the DPW about removing the existing playground, so that's definitely not included in this.
Because if, if we end up allocating, you know, funds and it's under, and we can't find additional funds to support the project, then, so the money has been allocated for that project, so how would we go back to reallocate it for something else?
Would have to be done at town meeting.
Right.
Just a minute.
So I know at the, Madam Chair, I know that at our capital expenditures meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, I know I said that I'm okay trying to put some more money into the skate park and maybe something at John Pond, but Clear Pond for me is a tough one because it's open eight weeks of the year, nine weeks of the year, and I just, and otherwise, it's basically locked, so I don't want us to get into a situation where folks are saying, oh, why did you put a playground there if we can't use it, you know, 10 months out of the year? And I don't think we can afford to staff Clear Pond because there is the water there that's, you know, kind of a big concern. So we did kind of talk about that, did you, every modern, yeah?
And being a bit of a public nuisance, being behind a chain link fence, having equipment that people can't use, would probably be a lot of strife that would be caused by doing something like that, where people are jumping over and damaging equipment or damaging locks, similar to what we saw during COVID, where when people couldn't get on the basketball courts, they were climbing, climbing.
Yeah.
So I agree that that's where the capital expenditures, you know, they had a lot of their conversations. Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah, you know, that would be great, but I'm just, I'm looking at this thing to myself. I'm not quite sure how to address all this.
So maybe we're going about this the wrong way? Maybe we should all look at things that we all agree on, that we can move forward and possibly, you know, make a motion or move forward on to get some of those things done? There's a lot of remaining questions, so maybe some of the ones that are pretty solid.
That we know.
Yeah, that we know, that we can, you know, kind of talk about and discard or move forward with, so the ARPA funds can be allocated in the most expedient way.
I think that's a good idea, Maureen, because some of these I would definitely like to see, and I see we have the chief here, so he could answer the questions on the fire, and at least, you know, we could go through, go through those.
That was a bunch.
But I do have a couple of questions, just as Brian does on some of these things, like the irrigation wells. I'm pretty sure it's pretty expensive to run those irrigate, the water, to pay for the water, isn't it?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so that is, those are something that we may want to push forward because in, I think in the long run, it'll start paying for itself by not having to pay those high utility bills on that. So if that's the case, I wouldn't mind moping those together, moving them forward.
A three-year ROI on that with the bills.
We could maybe submit with the federal ARPA funds, direct, the direct funding rather than with one of them.
Yeah, because I don't think Plymouth County will do the actual wells.
Right.
So, you know, those, I think we could knock out right away and say, let's move those forward because, you know, well, they'll pay for themselves, so.
Because there was a challenge with the, the library irrigation, I think, for quite some time with, you know, having to shut off from Ted Williams Camp and, you know, coming back, so having it isolated for each one, they'll be able to control it better, I think, so. So I only see two on here, there's no other ones, right? Just the library.
I think it was just the two.
Library and the police, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe there's another well being requested under the normal capital plan as well on parks. I think there's three well projects.
Okay.
I have questions on that.
Do you guys remember talking about that at the capital?
I do, but I don't remember it being separate, so.
And again, I'm getting.
In the interest of time, I also have a number of items that I would like to see. I, I, I'm struggling because all this is just full of like opinion and comments and such, I couldn't really send it to everybody outside the meeting. If you'd like, I could just, you know, all the missing things.
Hit the highlights.
Yeah. I'll try to go quick.
Okay.
So parks, any ADA improvements for beach and water access at Clear Pond? We're almost in the season for Clear Pond, so if there's any kind of beach combing or re-surf, refreshing the sand at Clear Pond. Improvements of fence sightlines at Clear Pond, I don't know if there are any that are left there. Looking left is almost impossible depending what kind of vehicle we're running on, some big trees growing out against the fence, you know, they consider pulling the fence line back, you know, five, 10 feet, and taking down a few of the ones that you can't see through. Parking lot grading and drainage at Ted Williams Camp, we moved on logs since we try to market it, and if there's heavy rains, we've seen voting, or if there's weddings and such, people are trudging through massive poles in that area. Maybe some simple freewall and wall courts, it's just cement that gets poured in place, kind of a U shape, that's easy. Regrading and seeding existing soccer fields. We've entered signage at the parks and adding illumination, because I think they basically have like solar signs, or solar lights right now, used on the precinct side. Let's see, public works, I'd like to see us expedite the butt material being removed, that's still ongoing, it's going to take us another five or six years under the current plan. I'm really afraid that the cost is going to surge over the next few years, or they're going to lose the location there.
The which, I'm sorry.
The butt, the, we highlighted here, the back.
Oh, oh, okay. Yep.
Could we extend, you know, the water line that was mentioned, not just to the potential fire department's location, but also to more fields, because then we wouldn't need that well project, and then they have potable water if necessary. Let's see. With fire showing us the need for UTV, would police also benefit from smaller ATVs for community policing in addition to similar areas of getting access to the VODTA lines? Improvements in the security camera infrastructure, you know, parks ran into a problem where they couldn't add on to that because there was deficiencies, but I think I heard another meeting that might be being fixed. Again, in general, it's just any ADA projects, and then perhaps if it qualifies, the stuff Tracer's been working on for a lot of agendas and things, and that's essential. So those are all, what I thought were missing things, there's still plenty of public comments there.
I see, remember Fabian has the capital plan.
Yep.
Is there, you said a well?
That's what I'm looking, I can't see very well.
It's full.
I don't see one.
There was like Northfield Water Electricity, that was one of them.
Northfield Water Electricity, $15,000 in the 2025 budget.
Right, and no well, just, what does it say, what?
Water Electric.
Okay.
Which would lead the plantist to plug into a shallow well nearby, not a potable well.
Just for, like, him washing her.
If you've got access to full water bar, it's potable, it used to be. If you've got more than, more than 25 people, you become a public water.
Water drinking water, and then it has to be over testing.
Now we run into the problem of John Pond, and we just talk about.
Right. Okay. Well, I'm open to suggestions on how we want to move this forward. Well, I'm open to suggestions on how we want to move this forward because, I mean, I definitely want to hear a recommendation from the capital expenditure as to your priorities to be addressed FY '25. And maybe it's the, the higher costing items that we put through that are needed.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a recommendation on three of the items and see if we can get a vote to push a few through and then we'll have more conversations, if that'd be.
Yep.
No, maybe I can make a recommendation to approve the council on aging addition of food pantry. That's item number one. Item number two would be the town hall roof. I'll give the amounts to, $10,000, sorry Tracy, I wasn't thinking of you. $250,000 for the addition for the food pantry, $10,000 for the roof, $9,800 for the transport trailer for the fire department, and then $60,250 for crack sealing would be my motion.
Okay, what was, again, I'm sorry, food pantry?
Food pantry, town hall roof, transport for fire station UTV, and then down to the Public Works for the $60,000 for the crack sealing.
And I want you to have a CBA fill station and we can talk about it, or do you not want to go there?
Um, let me see.
Where was that?
That was the fire department.
Oh, the SCUBA fill.
Yep.
I can answer questions, yeah, I don't know about that.
I can leave it, bearing questions, like we didn't ask the chief, we have a motion on the, okay.
Should I go?
We just.
Need a second.
And then need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Second. And discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may, just for, just for the record, that the chief is here on another, on another item. He's not here for copper.
Yep.
So, I don't want other department heads to think that they were not invited. So, chief is here for other items, but it's.
I don't know.
You treat everyone equally. Treat everyone equally.
That's why.
I know, I kill the fly, I greet life like a ninja. The, the SCBA fill station, what we currently have is ended life, it's, it broke down for about three or four months this year. We're filling bottles in Berkeley and Rayham. It's, so it was an inconvenient thing and it cost me, I think, in the neighborhood about $7,000 to repair this year. It should please in my equipment repair budget. The intent in the budgeting is to include transfer to a new fire station if, if that comes to be. And the, so intent and the strategy is to, to lower the soft costs for the fire station, but it'll function perfectly fine in the existing building.
Question, Tracy, it's movable?
Yeah, that's, that's something we clarified. With me, there's a $250,000 version that's on wheels and then a $100,000, a $100,000 version that would cost about $5,000 to move. So, that was included in the estimate.
But either way, through you, Madam Chair, we're going to need one for the new station and right now it sounds like this one's on its last life anyways. Okay.
Okay.
So, before, with items one through four, it's $330,050.
Yep.
And then, you know, if we include the, the SCBA, I'm assuming that's SCUBA, right? What, is that, I, look at that.
You actually said it the first time.
Okay.
SCBA, the first.
Okay. Because it, clearly it stands for something.
It's still the.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
It's still a breathing apparatus, right?
I'm looking at SCUBA, I'm like, how are we filling water?
Yeah.
Works for me. It's different tanks for underwater, right? That's the one that they would need to go, you'd need to go into a fire.
Self-contained water breathing apparatus, and then the self-contained breathing apparatus, self-contained breathing apparatus is what we.
Yeah. All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we want to take these by department? Because perhaps bundling them all together, people would vote differently if they're separate or all bundled.
Well, we have a motion in a second on the floor, if you want to, not, do you want me to withdraw it? You guys want to vote on it?
The only reason I would like to stay with that one is because I think even the capital expenditures committee was pretty, pretty sure we need to do these. So, including the, though, and we clarified that we can move it. And then I think going by department might be better, but I know I just want to move these four or five through. That's, I agree that with Maureen, that we should just move some of them along.
So, with those five, we're at $430,217. I don't know if anybody else checked the math, but that's roughly what I have with those. So, if that was coming from the allotment available, is this going to be from the direct? Was this going to be for direct funding or we got to go?
The direct, direct would be the library and police irrigation wells, and then the remainder would be Plymouth County.
Okay, so this would be for Plymouth County. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, Plymouth County. So, that still leaves us just a little over 400, I think, on the table for that. And Brian may be, you know, going through departments for the next piece of it, maybe for you too, maybe. Motion in a second, any further discussion?
So, is the tanks in that motion?
Yes, in that motion.
Is the that motion?
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, could we have the motion officially amended to include the SCBA fill system station?
Amended?
Amended.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, no.
All right, so next step, do we want to vote the, the irrigation? We have a motion for those two.
I would make a motion to do the irrigation well at the library as well as the irrigation well at the police station.
From the direct funding?
Yes, because that one won't be covered by the county.
There's a motion, I'm going to hear a second.
The two wells?
The two wells.
Second.
And discussion? So, roughly that's about $60,000 for those.
Just the discussion that it makes sense to do it on the perspective of having it hooked up to, to the water supply is actually more expensive than this and you'd get your money back in, you know, less than, less than five years, less than seven years max. So, yeah, yeah, so it would be, it would be something that would actually reduce our operating budget in the long term, which I am all for.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
All right, so can we put this back on the agenda for the 22nd?
Yes.
And we'll talk about how we'll put it on there based on, it'll be after the discussion, after the.
Madam Chair, can I make them a suggestion?
Yeah.
That we go back to the department heads and ask them for a little bit more clarification on the remaining items and maybe include Mr. Day's questions, if he has a lot of them, five pages.
I can forward them on if you'd like.
Not be a bad idea. So, Madam Chair, I think Brian had questions and possible additions. Okay. Yeah, can you forward those to us through Bob or whatever? Yeah.
Looks like you put a lot of work into that. I see a lot of.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the Park ADA one.
Yeah. Me too.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on what Member Carbone said, so I will reach out to department heads to see how they came up with these costs, kind of some backup.
Yeah.
And a member, Day, could send along to all the members. Yeah, email I have that, but I can break that up and send that off to the departments.
Maybe I'll update this and send it to you.
Excellent, I'll circulate it.
Thanks.
And also, if you wouldn't mind updating the summary sheet, so we'll have that as well.
Yep.
For discussion in the next meeting, so. All right. All right, let's move on to select four minutes. Everybody has an opportunity to look at the minutes from the meeting of March 11th and March 25th. I like to do minutes independently if I can, so do I hear a motion for the minutes of March 11th?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, abstain.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you abstain.
Day, aye.
Your motion passes. March 25th, 2024, any motion?
Uh, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Uh, Fabian, aye.
Candido, abstain.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you abstain.
Day, aye.
Tracy, did you get all those?
Yes.
Okay, we have a few appointments that we need to do at this point, so let's jump right into this. First thing is the animal control. So, we have appointments for the animal control officer and the assistant animal control officers that would expire currently April 30th, 2024. So, the motion for the reappointments, the term would be through April 30th, 2025. So, do I hear a motion? I prefer that, you know, whoever makes the motion just read the name and make a motion. Make a motion to make the following reappointments with all terms to expire April 30th, 2025. David Freitz, Animal Control Officer slash Constable, Darcy Lee, Assistant Animal Control Officer, Ronnie Freitz, Assistant Animal Control Officer, Lisa Felsky.
Felsky.
Felsky, Assistant Animal Control Officer, and Kathy Sealy, Assistant Animal Control Officer.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
Next, this is a reappointment for Wilford Corey as our veteran agent and Graves officer. His appointment currently will expire on April 30th, 2024, and this reappointment would bring it through April 30th, 2025. Your motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
All right. Uh, next appointment would be for Patricia. Now I'll need some help here. Do we know how to say the last name?
Nastikaros.
Nastikaros, as a member of the Council on Aging Board. Attaches a letter from the Council on Aging Board President requesting that Patricia be appointed as a full member due to a vacancy, and she's currently serving as an alternate. And this appointment with a term expiration of July 31st, 2025. Your motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
All right, next appointments, Michelle Bouchard to the Conservation Commission as a full member, and then Brian Anderson as an associate member. So, attached is a, a letter submitted by the Conservation Commission supporting the, the appointments. I'll just read it briefly. The Conservation Commission currently has an opening for another member. We have reviewed three individuals that expressed interest and submitted resumes for the position, and I believe all of you have those resumes here.
Madam Chair, possible point of order? Do we have to accept Mark Knox's resignation before we appoint?
Madam Chair, no, they had a vacancy on the commission prior to Mark's resignation.
Thank you. Okay, and then at their meeting on the 26th, the commission voted unanimously to recommend Michelle Bouchard for the appointment for the Conservation Commission, and then the appointment for Brian as the associate member. So, this would be the expiration for Michelle, the term is July 31st, '26, because this particular vacancy expires in, I guess it expired in 2023, and these are staggered, I guess, years, so. So, I guess we'll do that motion first.
Effectively?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michelle Bouchard for the appointment on conservation. Expiration date would be July 31st, 2026.
Second?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
And a motion for the associate?
I'd like to make a motion for, it's an associate. It says here as an associate member. I'd like to make a motion for Brian Anderson as an associate member of the Conservation Commission. Expiration date, July 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion?
Discussion?
Oh, yes, please.
First of all, I really like Brian's background as well, and seems like he'd be also a good fit for economic development if he'd be interested. But also looking at the form, that's not even listed. I don't know if we need to check our form and make sure all of the committees are available or on it.
Oh, to update the form?
Yeah.
I think, I don't know when we've ever revisited this, but.
It could be an overlooking or it's just not there for a specific.
No, it's not.
Which one is it?
The economic development. I'm sure with your powers, Brian, you can convince just about anybody to dip their toe in the water.
It doesn't have parks, I think.
Yeah, that's because it's parks is elected.
Okay. So, maybe Tracy, we can take a minute or something just to kind of map it back, to make sure that we have all the, the appointed boards, committees and commissions on our form. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye?
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
All right. And next, this is never easy to receive a resignation from any of our commissions, boards or committees, but attaches a letter of resignation from Mark Knox from the Conservation Commission. I'll read it briefly here. After much deliberation, I've decided to resign from my appointed position on the Lakeville Conservation Commission effective immediately. I appreciate my time served and hope this letter is received without prejudice. I would like to thank all the board members, past and present, that have committed their personal time and effort to Lakeville. Serving Lakeville has been a rewarding, educational and meaningful experience, and I am grateful for the opportunity. I also wish all the best to the remaining and future Conservation Commission members, as I know this position comes with great responsibility, stress and commitment. And with best regards, Mark Knox. So, I mean, I personally like to thank Mark for all of his, you know, work he's done on the Conservation Commission. You know, we don't hear a lot about the Conservation Commission, but they're out there and they're watching.
They're watching.
All right, thanks Nancy.
Just to add to that, Madam Chair, you know, I'm sad to see Mark, you know, go from this board. He's done a lot. He actually, you know, chaired the very complicated 43D. That was something that none of us were around when it came into being, but I thought he had done a really good job trying to chair through that. It wasn't a popular thing, so I hope Mark comes back in some capacity because he handled some of that stuff really, really well. So, you know, again, we don't, we don't necessarily make those laws here, but if our town adopts them at town meeting, we have to follow through with it. And, you know, sometimes we make corrections later on, but, you know, I thought that that was a big lift for him and I appreciate the work that he did on that.
Yeah. Madam Chair, may I? Mark has been on multiple committees for at least the last six, seven years. So, he's served in lots of capacities and helped out significantly and chaired a lot of his positions. I'd like to reach out and say thank you very much for your time you spent and that it's much appreciated from all the people that spend their time volunteering and they know, you know, what it is to spend that time and passion. And they know, you know, what it is to spend that time and passion, um, doing stuff for the town you love.
Just to pile on there, I'd like to thank Mark for his time on conservation planning and everything else that he did, or still does. I got the opportunity to work with him a bit more over the last year and get to know him a little better. And, you know, behind the scenes, it was nice to see his enthusiasm and how much he actually did care for the town and was willing to ask hard questions that others usually wouldn't want to. So, you know, I hope he gets some good rest, but thinks about coming back and doing something else in the future.
Maybe you can work in magic too, Brian. All right, so, did you have anything?
You guys covered it all. But I hope you come back.
All right, so, all right, I'm gonna ask for that. Very difficult motion.
I'll make that motion. I make a motion that we accept Mark Knox's resignation from Conservation Commission.
Second.
All right, your motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Uh, Fabian, aye.
Candido. Carbone reluctantly, aye.
Tony, you aye.
Day, aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, just needed a quick second here. Let's see what we left off. All right, number 13. Um, I think this is gonna take some discussion. So I would. All right, so look at this. Chief, if you wouldn't mind, cause you're gonna be called up at some point anyways. Might as well grab a seat. So we're gonna revisit, um, impossible vote to approve the comprehensive emergency management plan. Uh, this came in front of us at our last meeting. And the board had decided to, um, bring it back with the five-member board. Because this was, you know, a comprehensive plan. That we thought that it would be nice to have all five members weigh in on. So I'm asking if everybody had a chance to go through it. Because it's, what was it, 110 pages? And, um, I know I did my homework and I had to go through it. Ben, sure I have some questions?
I wasn't here, so I'm probably missing out. I don't know.
We didn't discuss it?
All right, so I'll, um, I just had, uh, well, I had a bunch of questions. Um, my first question was, um, has this been reviewed by KP Law at all? Did this go through KP Law review?
Uh, no, it hasn't. The source of this document is basically a template that comes from MEMA. And you plug information into the, to the, uh, into the, the purpose that they provided to us. It's kind of, it's common from community to community.
I would probably make a recommendation to the board to actually maybe have a review on anything that we're doing policy-wise. But that's just an opinion of mine. And second part was, um, you answered some of, some of it, cause it's a template. What was the working relationship with the other, uh, town departments like police and DPW? Cause I do see they're mentioned extensively within the document. And they're gonna have, they're gonna have to pick a coordinator. They're gonna have specific duties assigned to them. Um, what was the process like to get their feedback on this, uh, or bring this together?
So the original document that was provided to the select board, that was, uh, it generated some comments. Everybody that's named in the, in the document, they get a chance to review it. We, um, I sent out, probably in August, I sent a, a copy to each department head that's mentioned and the town administrator at the time, um, and solicit comments. And so then, um, the only one, the only person that had any comments was Ari. Had some, some requests involved. He wanted some, um, this would be a can of worms. There was really very little responsibilities bestowed on the town administrator within the template. And he wanted to enhance his role in the emergency management plan.
Got it. I have a bunch more. They're just little ones, though.
No, it's okay.
The page 15, um, on the violations section. I just had a question if complete meant without violations or violations were resolved.
Hey, um, did you get the copy there? We were running around and I didn't get back to my office.
You said 15?
Yes, page 15, I think it had. It was talking about violations, um.
That's not what we have on page 15.
Well, that means I can't even read my own writing.
No, I have page 15 here, the technological.
Technological hazards?
Yes.
But that's not what.
That's not what I had. I had violations like for the facilities. Yeah, that's right here. Right, we're gonna sit?
Yeah. Do we have multiple 15s?
No, but this is what you're referring to, right?
I am.
It's the same page. Yeah. What is yours say?
Transport, technical. Let's skip that for now. I'll move on. But if we can, while we're there, is there a reason why this needs to be included in this document? I mean, if, if there's a list kept on file, um, at the Lakeville Fire Department, would this list need to be included in the plan? Because this is changing, because this'll change. And I know your plan for this particular document is to be able to update it and have the freedom to be able to add, um, you know, as things move. But, um.
So not being, um, basically handed this, uh, this document, basically my understanding is, is that this was called for in the template and that's why it was included.
Okay.
Um, I don't see, I don't, I mean, we, if we choose to remove that, that's fine. I don't see, uh, any statutory requirement for it to be in there. And we do maintain a, a right to know list that's required department. So there's no, no heartache with leaving it as far as I'm concerned.
Cause I, I mean, I'm just looking at this as, you know, this is, um, you know, a document that says, hey, can we look at your comprehensive emergency plan? You pull it off the shelf, they can look at it. And if they get to this part and said, oh, this list is kept on file at the Lakeville Fire Department. So we could, you know, pull that list.
Be more accurate if it were a surge to the fire department?
Right, it'd be more real time, I would think.
No, makes sense to me.
Yes.
Question come in? Once approved, does the final copy of this have to be filed and kept on record with the state? And because then they would not have access to this information should they need something at a regional level?
So this has already been signed up on MEMA? And, and since it's modified from the, from the, from the, from them being okay with it, I'd have to resubmit it back to them, but I don't see them giving us a hard time.
Well, my, my question being, are we still part of Region 2 with them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Region 2 of MEMA covers a number of municipalities down here. I don't know if they need to have access to a, you know, all their regions' plans and have a comprehensive list of everything in the area, um, or not, if there was ever a regional situation.
How is the document shared?
It's, it's specific to us that, that, the benefit of this document is the template means that somebody comes in mutually aid. They, they know where to look in the document for the information they need. So there's, uh, uniformity from town to town. And that's basically what they're looking for versus a shared document. There's actually a SEM, a statewide SEM, which is the, the master plan for the state. And then each community is supposed to have their own. So it's, it's, uh, it's really not, it's not specific for Lakeville. But what they care about is the structure and the, the adherence to the template. So somebody coming in from the outside would know where to look at our plan for information.
Okay. I guess that there's the common theme throughout this whole document. You know, are we providing any information that would be considered a liability on the town?
Maybe that's, could be answered by KP Law, going to the previous suggestion.
Page 19 would be my, my concern. Go ahead. I'm, I'm all set. I just forget, I, yes?
No, and again, they, they wanted to, so to let us know that it's, it's, um, there's certain requirements and structure and flows of authority that they insist upon. But what we include and what we don't include is our decision.
Got it.
Okay.
The next question is around the term chief municipal officer.
Yeah.
Which, never heard that used in the context before. Um, in this document, it cites the chair of the select board as the chief municipal officer. I would assume if we adopted that, we would have to give some special powers to the chair as a chief municipal officer. Because right now, there's two distinctions. There's chief administrative officer, which is the TA, and chief executive officer, which is the board of selectmen. Um, but there is no title called chief municipal officer?
Yeah, I know.
But then it's, yeah, but then it switches in page 87 to chief, uh, elected official. Which is another, yeah, which is another term and like.
Yeah, so there is no definition. I'd look for that definition. And, um, I think if we modify that, it's not the end of the world for us to modify. But as, as far as the chief executive officer, it, it is defined in Master on Law. I think it's section, uh, chapter four, section seven defines what that is. And, and like in a mayor, uh, type of government, it's the mayor.
Yep.
And it says shall, shall be the mayor. And then as far as our form of government, it says the select board for.
Yes. As opposed to the chair. It's the, the board in its totality.
So logistically, they always kind of lean on the chair because it's difficult to, to get leadership from five people at once if I'm sitting in the EOC.
Yep.
So that's kind of the practicality side of it.
Yeah, but that would be something that is not within our current rules and bylaws. So we would have to create it.
And another thing too is that we can, if we had a town charter, we can specify who that person is. Or if we had a town manager, that, that person can be appointed as the, as that chief executive officer.
Okay.
But we have an administrator, so.
So we probably wanna wordsmith that a little.
The, the key to the, the, I spoke to MEMA today and they said, please emphasize to the board that this is a fluid document. It's not binding. And acceptance is, acceptance isn't, isn't the, the very next day is the time to amend inaccurate or any information that needs to be updated. You know, so they, they, they were kind of emphasizing the fact that, you know, I was kind of telling them about the process going along. And they were, they were saying like, it's, this isn't, uh, we're not adopting law here. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a plan that, that basically is more about the way we should, should conduct business. It's almost more of a benchmark, benchmark. This is what we should strive to be. And, and we should improve the plan as we go through experiences like flooding and, and all these disasters and things that are missing in our plan. Like that's the time to evaluate it and change it. And we log our changes and then we come back in five years and we make it part of the official document. The, uh, this, Mr. Viveras is like, he's like, uh, he was trying to be like, ah, tell him not to sweat it. I'm like, I'm not saying that. And, you know, you know, we'll, we'll change it the next day if something's not right. And, uh, I'm like, I'm not saying that either. But, uh, so that, that's basically the spirit I'm trying to communicate to you. I don't have any hardship with doing any of these things as far as KP Law. It's not a, we have a, we have an outdated SEM to follow if we do have an incident. So it's just whatever you guys, whatever gets you to a comfortable place, I'm happy to do it.
And then my last question was just kind of what you were alluding to. From around page 46 on, when it was talking about, um, the powers vested. It seems like a little bit of overreach, um, for what we're tasked with. So that made me a little concerned that we're, we're signing up for something that we don't have the powers to actually execute. So that's where my thoughts are on that whole section.
And this is definitely a, a template thing. This is not something I.
Understood, made, made clear. But those are just my broad talking points. Most of the things that I have are repetitive for the same points over and over again. But yeah, so I appreciate you, uh, you letting me understand a little bit more how that came about.
I hope I helped you understand.
I understand.
I think one of the corrections I had sent in, Chief, was to add acetaminophen. Is there a reason why we didn't add acetaminophen under the special facilities? Or am I looking at an old copy?
Maybe it's an old copy, or maybe, um, in the confusion of all the edits, I left it out.
But we should. Thought it was in here.
Was it?
Maybe I missed it, but I mean, I, I thought I saw it.
Yeah, Ponikwet's on page 17. And then the other schools are on page 18, Free Town Lakeville Middle School, Georgia Austin.
Is it helpful for you, or it might be helpful for me, I'll, I'll rephrase it. Um, when I put a shared Word document, is that a violation of local meetings? If I put a shared Word document out for you guys to access and comment on?
Yes.
Is, all right.
Yeah. It's hard to do some real work around here.
Cause that's really convenient for you guys to direct.
Right, yeah.
Direct comment on something to me.
Because even though, um, it just, what, um, Member Fabian said, I had a note here. Do these actually need to be listed in this document? Cause I felt that that might have been a liability thing.
On which page?
The schools. Facilities.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the idea is to break this plan out and, and potentially have people there that aren't familiar with the town assisting us. And so it may seem obvious to us, but it's not so obvious to somebody that's not familiar with the town.
So this is, this document is, is just more destined to be a higher level. You have your standard, um, operating procedure, SOPs, when a particular incident occurs. But this is more just a generalization of, we have a plan in place and we've touched upon those key elements that need to be addressed for the plan.
So I'm gonna say something I must say. This is more for me about being able to score better on, um, maybe an application or two.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
And I, I think, I think that's why, um, at the last meeting when I had made my comments, because it, we could potentially need to ask for grants for flooding, which is a problem that's ongoing. That's why I was hoping we could make it. And at which, it, you did change it to include such as a flooding event right on page. I think that says 12, but I can't tell. Little vision problem today. So that, that could possibly.
You have to specify that.
So that could possibly, this document could possibly assist with getting grants in the future, correct?
Okay. So, Member Day, you've had experience in this, cause I believe you worked in the.
You did.
Yeah, so. All right. So I'd, I'd be interested to hear some of your.
I, I thought, I mean, it's, it's a template document, it's good overall. I appreciate Ari coming to the topic of culture and that's nice. I already shared this with the chief, so it wouldn't be a surprise to him. My, my takeaway actually kind of trails on what Member Candido said, which is there's a lot of, and no disrespect to our current chair, there's a lot of stuff put on the chair, the chair, the chair.
Yeah.
I really feel like that changes, we're all supposed to be equal members, right, for the most part? Like this and docs, this chair signs, does agenda. I feel like that really for us should be the town administrator, so that it's the same as it normally is. And like, if there's something bigger that comes up, we can get a meeting together within two business days if it was an emergency quicker. But, uh, it just, it felt like it was a real change in our daily operational works to just suddenly say, oh, forget the TA, we're just gonna go over the chair and put it on that.
Right.
And one of the things I added, um, I added my own language was, was specifying that he would liaison between the executive with the three different things they call the, the executive officer within the template. So it's for practicality purposes for me. You know, in the real world, Lakeville, I'm gonna be, I'm responding on calls. So it's very difficult to make five phone calls or five text messages. And working through the TA would be very beneficial to me operationally.
Oh, absolutely. So there should be that.
I mean, where it says that, can't we just write in town administrator?
I, absolutely.
Right?
Uh, there is some, I mean, there's some weird language in the Master on Law when I, we were, I was trying to look up and research this. But it does specify that, that the elected board can designate somebody.
Yeah, so we would just have to go the, um, for the purposes of emergency, comprehensive emergency management plan. That the, this means so and so.
Correct.
Yep.
Works.
Under the Emergency Operations Center, it says, "The Emergency Management Director or Designee will ensure the equipment in the EOC is functional and ready to support an activation. The equipment includes laptops, phones, monitors, smartboards, radios, and base stations." Is this something we already have or something we have to purchase to stock the center with?
There's, um, it's basically, you know, uh, the, the police department is, has modern technology that we have built. So there's, there's already, the IT is, is in there. We have radios that we use every day. They can be applied to those purposes or we have town laptops and things like that. So, um, there's really no hidden expenses related to this.
Sorry. I heard over here first. Okay.
I was just gonna say to Brenna's point, which is excellent, is that in a perfect world, you do have a locked rack of gear ready to go. So that if something happens, you're not worrying about, oh, I left my laptop in my office, I gotta go there. Or it's on the other side of the flood, et cetera. You know, so when we worked at the state EOC, we had a rolling cart full of 48 laptops, already charged, already updated, ready to go. You pulled them out, you signed it, and off you went, just so everybody knew. It was all just process, process, process. You know, wheel out the lunch cart, grab a laptop and go. So that, you know, whoever was coming in from police didn't have to go find their gear. Whoever's coming in from National Guard, go find their gear. It was just all provided.
What was your, what was your ESF number? I was four. I was four for the state.
I still have my old badge.
Um, there was a portion in there, sorry, just to follow up on yours. There was a portion in there that said they would be able to, I forgot the wording, but it was like, command assets from the town. I was like, wow, Mike's taking over this town.
Mike's taken over.
Very important.
But yeah, we should have a list of, you know, stuff designated, to your point.
So doesn't the police station, that bigger conference room, not the community room? But isn't there the other conference room where I thought we had some?
There's conferencing tools like, uh, voice. There's conferencing tools like voice, like video conferencing and voice conferencing.
Yeah, so Brenna, have you ever been into that room?
The smaller room?
The interrogation room?
Yes.
So there's, right off of the lobby, there is another, that other, it almost looks like a wall, but you know, I would just make an appointment with the chief and ask him to show you the, show you the, the places.
The best tool for, for me is, is really my, my local coordinator for Mima. I have him on cell phone, he answers and he kind of takes care of everything for me because of the, the lack of, the lack of capability or capacity on my part to do those things. And then the other big, big tool is something called Web EOC, which is a, a web-based platform for, for, for me maintaining my situational awareness around the state and also requesting assets electronically. So it comes in, it creates, it, oh, it basically populates a log for the town of Lakeville. It tracks all our requests, it tracks all our events. And so when you get into the reimbursement stage later on, it's, it's there, it's permanent record, it's timestamped and, and it's a great, it's something I keep open in my car and, and watch and, and make requests in real time.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a comment. I know a lot of select board members know, but I don't know if everyone knows. Mike's worked very hard, or Chief O'Brien has worked very hard in making sure he has a great working relationship with the emergency responders. And we posted them in Lakeville and that's two-part, just to, you know, get, get us familiar with that. But he also has people be familiar with the town, which is very helpful to be able to see, you know, what's going on in town and continue to foster that relationship. It's been something that I think has really benefited the town or could potentially benefit the town in the case of emergency.
Thank you.
So we already voted in the past that we were going to adopt a, a comprehensive emergency management plan. So we already have one. So the vote here tonight, because we have to have some kind of a, a final document. And I know each one of us has notes all over. So how would you suggest?
Can I give each member an electronic copy, not web-based, not shared? Have them put their, their track change comments up on that document and have me kind of yield a final product for, for consideration.
That's fine. That works for me.
It works for me.
And when we have that final product, submit to KP Law and Mima for approval.
Okay, so once that's all set and then it'll come back to this board for our final.
Final draft.
Final, final. Final, final?
It's, and like I said, we have, there's not a deadline here, so we can get it right.
Well, I'd like to make sure that we had some kind of a, I'd hate for this to just end up in air and then all of a sudden come back and we haven't done. So I would say by town meeting.
Okay.
Which was June.
No, I appreciate it.
Might be a good timeline to kind of target.
Yeah, I had given the chief a bunch of mine.
And I forgot one of the assets.
So I probably don't have much more, so.
Okay.
No one can work with everybody else.
Send yours. Just send me a electronic copy.
Same here. So Member Fabian can just take some more time off. He'll have less homework to do. So if you, yeah, if you wouldn't mind just sending that out.
Not at all, not at all.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I learned a lot, actually.
Have a good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business. We have something that comes up periodically, something called Chapter sixty-one. I know that this, over the last year, the select board and the administration had worked to put together a policy or procedure, I guess would be more correct, would be more procedure. So, you know, when a particular, you know, property was in Chapter sixty-one land, whether it's agricultural or recreational and it comes out of Chapter sixty-one land, what happens and how does it pass through the proper, you know, board of decision makers, I guess? And so at this point, we had identified something that would be useful to the select board. And that would be a status report each year to the select board. And the Board of Assessors, my understanding, has a listing of all the land that is in chapter land, Chapter sixty-one land, correct? Mr. Oliver, if you'd like to come up, state your name and your address for the record, please, just.
John Oliveri, I'm here on behalf of the Board of Assessors. I live in Lakeville, Massachusetts, Woodland Ridge Drive.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
My pleasure, Madam Chair.
So again, this request, I think, because we said, oh, what land is in chapter land? And how do we know when it's in chapter land or if it's coming out of chapter land? So it would be nice for this board to have a report from the assessor's office. I'm not sure at what time of year, I guess that would be a decision of this board, when that report would be most, I guess, useful or beneficial?
We can do whatever you want is the short answer. So I've already checked with RRG, who is our principal assessor, or acts as our principal assessor. And they are, they have the ability to give you that report whenever you would like it. Yes, we do track that and it's not much more to add. So you let us know what you want and we will make sure we are able to provide you with that.
I believe it's October that people get recertified for.
Correct, yes.
Chapter sixty-one.
Yes, and the way you come out of it is you don't reapply. You don't pull out in the middle of the year.
You wait till the next year.
You don't submit your application. And we do keep track of those who did not. So it's, it's very simple routine process for us to put in place.
Okay. If, may I ask that like we get a report along with a map and all of the parcels and acreage included?
You can always ask whatever you want, ma'am. Doesn't mean you're always going to get it.
No, it really does.
In this case, you, you will get that, all that information.
I appreciate it. But can we get that probably in like November of every year? Just, just in the sake of timeliness to understand when everything is re-upped?
Right.
Okay.
No problem.
Right, yes, I was.
In addition to, to Member Candido said, I think it'd be really useful to, Board of Assessors drives a lot of our GIS updates and the different layers that they create every year. If we could actually figure out a way to throw a few bucks their way to create a sixty-one layer so that we could just pull up your assessor's database and just click a box and.
That's fantastic.
The map Candido asked for is overlay everything else. Because I think sometimes we get into these discussions when land is coming out, we all kind of, you know, sit in a circle and say, well, is there any value of this land to the town? And if you can just quickly go and look at it and say, oh, it abuts this, it connects these conservation area, whatever it might be.
Even better than a map is having a movable document.
Access.
Yeah, an access.
Or then maybe it helps drive conversations with open space to know what those are and go talk to those landowners and say, hey, if you ever think of selling, it just seems like something we're missing.
If it pleases the board, if we can maybe direct our town administrator to work with the assessors to come up with, you know, what that cost would look like.
Yeah, that's, again, easy enough for us to find out what that additional layer would be. I don't think it's going to be anything drastic, so.
You've got the system, you've got the, great suggestion, the platform. I think we might as well to try to use it to its fullest capacity, so. Anybody else have anything on that? Because so we're, we're looking toward November to have a, just a list?
What I will do is I will check with staff to find out what particular time would be the best for us to get that out to you. But the goal would be at some point in November, whether it's November first, December first, November fifteenth. But it sounds like, which makes a lot of sense, right after that process has happened, this board would like to know, alright, who's, who's not in anymore.
Yeah, and then we'd obviously like one now as well.
But what is it, what is it report? I mean, what are we looking for in that report? Just.
So if people haven't renewed their chapter?
Right, but what are you looking for? Are you looking for the amount of land that is in that chapter for that property? Are we just looking for the property map block and lot? Are we looking for?
I would say status of the lot because even if they take it out, there is a five-year period that they might have to pay full tax before they have to pay a back tax. Back tax is not the right word.
Rollback.
Rollback, yeah.
Yes, I think that report should at least, even if they drop out, continue to include those parcels for five full years so that if we get into one of these conversations again, we're not all going, oh, have they paid one year or two year?
The change of use.
Look there, right? When's, when was the change of use? Was the change used for the whole thing, part of the thing? What's the assessed value? What's the taxed value?
So what we could probably do is, starting on this first report, I mean, obviously initially we can give you what we have now. But we want to, we'll go back as far as the rollback taxes would become in effect. So we use this coming, November as an example. You'll, we'll provide you with, and I believe we can do this, not only the stuff that's coming out this year, but also for the past three, four years, whatever it is, what has come out. Again, I'm assuming, we do track that and it should be easy enough for us to get. So then it will be a rolling list and as the fourth, the fifth year drops off, the properties can come off the list because at that point they're just traditional regular lots at that point of properties. Does that make sense?
Can we also have a pony?
No. No, wrong committee.
Wrong committee.
I'm sure we have a committee in town that can take care of that, but not us.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna head out.
Okay.
I'm glad you came in, Leah, really. Thank you. Alright, so, you know, whatever you can get to us for now and then we'll, you know, we'll do the report in November too. We'd just like to see what, what's.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll work on getting that together within the next week or so. We'll get you the initial report and then we'll get back to you on date specifics to when we will target to do that each year.
Okay, perfect. Do we need to formalize this in a vote or can we just? Right. I mean, it does say discuss and possible vote, but I don't know that it requires a vote? That we're just looking for a board now?
I don't think it does require a vote. You're asking another board to do.
Yeah.
Put something in place, so even if you took the vote and we decided not to, we can just have a battle between boards. But I can assure you, we will give that to you.
I suppose if we had to throw a pony in there, we'd probably have to have a, a vote, but.
Yeah, if you would need a vote, vote for the pony.
Alright, so I think we're still talking assessors here. So updates on the existing Chapter sixty-one procedures to account for land with no third-party purchase and sales agreement currently in place. I'm gonna defer back to Member.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this came up recently where there was land presented to the board as an opportunity. When the original Chapter sixty-one procedures were created, it was all based on what had historically come before the town, which was a piece of land that was being converted. So we got a notice of intent to take it out of chapter. Or we were provided notice that there was a purchase and sale on the property, something that would have triggered our right of first refusal. Recently, property came before us where there was no notice of intent and there was no purchase and sale in place. So everybody said, what do we do now? Because it doesn't fit the, you know, the mold that we had before. So this item was really just to discuss, we need, we need something else in the flow chart. So the first couple of steps where it says like, how did it come in? Where do you go next? It's just figure out what the, okay, here's the third method it could have come in. What do we do next? Who do we notify? What do we get together, et cetera? I don't have suggestions on what that is, but that was kind of how we came up with the topic. So it might be a working group of some kind or.
Right, the good thing about this particular, you know, procedures, it's fluid because, you know, things like this come up. So I guess, I mean, we looked at the administration last time to say, can you put together a procedure for us? And so I guess we can certainly look to the administration to, you know, include that.
Yeah, I think the assistant town administrator is heavily involved in the first creation.
Yeah.
So perhaps she'd be willing to take a look.
I had some comments or questions if, if it is going to go to her, I will direct them to her. It's just about timelines and about, you know, just being more specific in some. There's some vague language, so it's just language-based, it's not really.
I think anytime that, you know, if you have, I mean, anytime we can bring a policy in front of this board to review for comments and with the new adopt, you know, adopted date, obviously. But, so this would be in addition to the policy, so I mean, certainly, because I know this is your first time, you know, on the board with this and, and being able to, you know, take a look at the policy. So because the board obviously would have to be, have a vote to it. So perhaps maybe you can meet with Mr. Nunes and maybe go over the things that you're looking to.
Yep.
Change, so when it comes back to us with the addition.
I think they would be called, I think they would be more called administrative changes, not materially changing it. So I don't even know that you'd need a vote, it's just some language.
Okay. Okay. So I mean, I know that this is.
I guess have more visits.
I mean, there's a lot happening this month. We have, you know, quite a few meetings for budgets, so I'm not saying that this needs to jump at the, you know, top of that, that pile.
Yeah, okay.
But I would say by, you know, sometime June, June.
Okay.
Into June, whatever, just something. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
If, there's one more. So also coming in front of us this evening, there was a change in staffing and hours in the assessor's office. And so I'd like to invite our HR director to the table.
Hi.
And talk a little bit about, you know, what we have in front of us this evening.
Okay, so we had put out a full-time Board of Assessors Office Assistant. We had kind of a change in the office where our full-time assessor specialist had retired. And so we replaced that with a part-time field assessor. And then we got the full-time office assistant in order to ensure that our office hours were going to be the same as the rest of the town offices, so that eight to four-thirty every day. With that, we got one internal applicant, which was our current part-timer, Linda. The, she's fully qualified, she's been doing it for seven years. So realistically, the, the job description isn't changing. It's more of her going from part-time to full-time. And when I did submit the office assistant, there was a few additional tasks that she would be doing as being that, that full-time person. So her rate after the seven years of being part-time was, hold on, I just had it ten seconds ago. It was twenty-four oh-two. The starting pay for the full-time position is nineteen sixty-seven. So the request is to actually start her at a higher step, which would be comparable to what she would be ranked now in the starting pay would be the twenty-three seventy-four. So it's still less than what she was be, was getting as a part-timer, but it would be on board where she should be. And I did look and it's already in that FY twenty-five budget. So when I spoke about us having those positions and it's still being twenty thousand dollars less to have the office assistant full-time and the field assistant part-time, I'm, we're still tracking on that twenty thousand dollar savings.
Are you meaning the FY twenty-four budget?
Nope.
The current budget?
FY, the twenty-five budget. So with twenty-four, we had allocated for a full-time assessor specialist and a part-time clerk. When we go to twenty-twenty-five, we had actually built it, or I should say, the Board of Assessors had built it as being a part-time field assistant in a full-time office. So it's already built into the budget with that twenty thousand dollar.
And we addressed this at town meeting in the fall, correct? If I remember correctly, I remember seeing the, the article in my mind.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, since I'm not.
Okay.
So yes, we did. We talked with this board prior to town meeting and the, explained that at the end of the day, because of the retirement coming up, when we made this switch, that it would benefit financially for that board. And this, what's happening now, it's, it's coming to the point where the part-timer did, did, excuse me, the full-time retired and came back as part-time and now that part-time needs to go to full-time. And the reason it went to town meeting is because we needed to start this ahead of time in order to get her up to speed with some of the additional items and whatnot that she was going to be doing, so.
I don't know if it's, it's gave me, when would the position effectively start? When would she start full-time in this position? Did I miss it here?
So, nope. We haven't submitted the offer based off of understanding if we're offering it at the rate of the 1967, or if we're offering it at that level increase.
Okay.
And then as soon as we offer it, she can start.
Okay, so it would be effective, whatever that start date would be?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm assuming everything going through and everything's predicated. I've never promoted anyone from part-time to full-time and given them a decrease in pay.
Yeah, so I spoke with Linda about it. And in July of 2024, with the 3% increase, she's actually then above the 2402. So instead of holding her back, she would get with the, she would stay with that 3% increase, which would bring her, I believe, to like 2419 or something.
Okay, so when the 3% comes in on top of the 20...
Yes, so in July.
Okay.
She'll be, she'll be tracking.
So that there'd be a couple of few months here?
Yes.
At the, okay.
And then you gotta look at the, the added benefits of when you're switching from part-time to full-time. Now you have, you know, the health insurance, you have the vacation.
Understood.
So it does compensate for, you know, that 20-something cents less.
I enjoy the 3% more than the rest of it.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the HR Director to offer the full-time Board of Assessor Office Assistant to Linda Pendiggrass at a rate of 2374, Level 4, Step 6, based on her experience.
2374?
What did I say? Did I? 2374. The number Lacey gave us.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Candido A.
Carbone Aye.
Don Hue Aye.
Day Aye.
All right, all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you very much. All right, so I think last, one of our previous meetings, we had three requests for public way licenses in front of us. So this evening, we have one to approve a, a public way license application for Tor de Crem. I'd like to speak a little.
Very impressive.
Bike ride fundraiser, which would be scheduled for May 19th, 2024. And they are also asking for a request to waive the fee. The fee currently is $250. In looking at this, I believe it looks like everything in here has been submitted. Tracy, you would say that this would be a full submittal, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
I have a question, Madam Chair. Just informational. For the $250 application fee, what is it that we would be waiving, or are we to waive this fee? It says that they have flagmen, so I'm assuming some of it was police presence. But is some of it also DPW cleaning up and making sure there's no trash prior to, trash after?
My understanding, and Member Day, I'm sure you can help fill me in from, you know, previous, last year. But the fees that we had in place would be supporting those initiatives.
It seems like the police isn't an issue, but trash is still an issue. That's my only concern, because I know our DPW Director goes out, goes the whole race route prior to anything going on in town, and then does it again after any type of races to ensure...
If I may, the, the fee was supposed to include the time and materials for DPW to do those kind of inspections before and after. We don't specifically call it out in Section 5. I'm also kind of surprised with 100 riders, there isn't a police presence of some kind. This police detail shows at zero. I mean, that's not a small number of people.
Because a lot of these are all nonprofit anyways that do come in front of us, so...
They've done it before.
That was my next question. I don't recall. This particular group, they happen?
I don't think...
Okay.
Through this town or just other locations?
I think they did. Yeah.
There is no issues?
No, it's not a race. It's just a bunch of people riding from one ice cream stand to another.
I like the concept.
That is pretty cool.
So they're probably staggered. They're probably not moving as a 100-person group because they're gonna wanna separate into groups and stuff.
I could be persuaded to waive it if they try to make it right and make sure that they're, you know, looking after and making sure the streets are clean and there's no litter left behind. I mean, I could see that if it is, you know, the staggered. And it is a small race compared to the other ones that we see in town.
It's like just a nice, you know, day ride out, you know, for good cause. All right, well, listen.
I was just gonna ask if Tracy knows, because precedent matters, too. Have we waived fees for any other nonprofits in the past?
No one has requested it.
And they said we've waived fees for five years, but we've only have fees for...
Just a few, wasn't it?
Three years. I think we instituted fees about four years ago.
They've done this, they've done this race for five years.
Okay.
But they, before, we didn't have the public use way application. And they, I, they did, so they're saying that no town had requested payment, you know, in the past five years. So this was a first for them. They weren't even aware they had to get this. So that's why they called that out.
Got it.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the application with the fee reduced to $250. On the contingents, or on the contingent letters, there is no significant trash cleanup or other issues that would, you know, require those funds.
Just for point of clarification, to waive the fee or not reduce it to 250?
Reduce it to 250.
Because it is 250.
Because it is 250, yeah.
The fee is the base...
They wanna pay, they wanna pay zero.
Right, the base fee is 250.
The normal fee is 500, and then nonprofits get it reduced to 250 automatically.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So they're requesting an additional... So they're requesting nothing?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, that's different, then. I don't know.
You were on such a good roll there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept it with the fee waived. And it's a bunch of people riding ice cream, or riding flags to get ice cream. If there's been no issues before, I don't see a reason to make a stink now.
I have a motion.
All second the motion?
And I have a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Candido A.
Carbone Aye.
Don Hue Aye.
Day Aye.
All right.
We'll have more money for ice cream. Yeah, I'll be waiting until...
We need that kickback, right?
Well, maybe the Metta Poise at Land Trust and the Friends of the Metta Poise at Bike Path get $250 more.
True.
Speaking of that, have any of you ever gone on a bike ride? That bike path in particular.
Oh.
It's fantastic. Don't go, people at home. Don't go. You won't like it. But it's fantastic. It goes from Fair Haven all the way through to the Wharf in Metta Poise. And you go by Estuaries, and you go by, like, rivers, and you're right on the beach. And a nice little golf course. It's gorgeous. If only, if only we had something like that going by our beautiful scenic ponds in town.
I'm a Betty's Neck Bike Path or something.
I like it.
Lovely.
I'm hearing it.
Okay, moving on to committee updates. Mr. Nunes, anything on the senior center addition feasibility study? I know we talked a little bit about the...
The addition?
The addition, but anything more than that?
Nope.
Okay. Fire Station Building Committee, we're meeting tomorrow evening, 6:30 at the police station. After our vote to support the recommendation by the Fire Station Building Committee for site location, I neglected to request a letter be sent to the Parks Commission from the Select Board. So if I have your support, I'd like to ask if our town administrator would draft a letter to please notify the Parks Commission that the recommendation did come from the fire station and the Select Board did support, and that we will continue to inform the Parks Commission as, you know, the project progresses, should there be any changes. Or updates, I guess.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question on fire when you're done.
I'm done.
Okay. It's a question, I don't know if it's an ask, but to date or going forward, do you anticipate the committee discussing the reuse, demolition, abatement, et cetera, of the existing facilities? Because I feel like that could be another large project, and if we just kind of potentially move out and leave it there, you know, what, what are we gonna do?
It's not in the, in the charge or the scope of, of that committee.
Okay.
I mean, it's certainly something that, you know, this board could entertain adding in there, but at this point, if there was no...
No ask for that.
Right, I mean, maybe that's something that would come from this particular board. Or maybe there's a, a one-off subcommittee that would be looking at that, should that come, like we did with the library. There was a library reuse subcommittee that was formed.
Madam Chair, is there any capacity in the budget to do a change order in the existing budget that you're working with? Have, have they reached capacity, or are they even...
We're gonna be discussing the budget tomorrow evening. There was $220,000 allocated for the initial phase of the, the project. So I'm not quite sure. I don't think we're anywhere close to that yet, but we could be creeping so close.
To your point, Brian, if we wanted to create an additional set of criteria or something that else that they could possibly work on to add to the scope, maybe we could do that with the additional capacity, as long as the wording suits what we voted in at town meeting, if it's all tied in, but I'm not 100% sure, because I don't have the wording in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, if I think through you, Ma'am, the wording, I think, is specifically for the schematic designs of the new station.
Correct.
So I think we're scoped only to that.
Right.
But the, I don't know if I wanna call it the next phase of the existing facilities concerns me, because that could be a hefty chunk of change, and we have
Absolutely.
no idea what's gonna happen to that, besides having to probably continue to heat it for unknown amounts of money.
Yes. And I remember when the vote came before, sorry, Madam Chair.
No, that's...
The vote came before the town, for the town hall. There was talk of some demolition costs that they had talked about briefly. But it was very light compared to what I think it's going to be.
And forgive me, but I'm not sure about the, in the feasibility study, if they even included that. I'd have to go back and look, because I don't think that I narrowed in on that.
I don't believe the last two did. I don't think they did.
Which is a huge, it's a huge miss not to be able to talk about what the impact of moving the fire station and repurposing of the space or demolishing the stays of the space is. Because, you know, if this project is X million, this is X million plus. So, yeah.
So let's think on that and, you know, come back to the, the table next time we do updates. And maybe we'll, because I'd like to resonate with that a little bit.
Maybe the committee has some...
Myself, I'd like to take myself out of the Fire Station Building Committee and out of Select Board role and kind of look at it from a rational and reasonable perspective. So we'll, we'll come back. We'll revisit. Okay, I know that, all right, go ahead. Brian, you're on the old colony, right?
Yeah, so no new updates, but for Members Don Hue and Candido, where that stands is there is a OPM on board now. So now they will be going before the state on, I believe, April 23rd and May 7th to select an architect. So there was three architects that responded to the request for services. So they're going to go through, shoot, what is it? DSP, Designer Selection Process, I think it's called? And by May 7th, they should have an architect on board. All three firms, the OPM was very excited to see the three that did, did apply. They've all done similar educational buildings in the area. Bristol Plymouth, one example, Diamond's another example, and a few others. So by May 7th, they should have the architect on board. And the first deliverable for the architect will be to come up with a... The P is, I'm gonna get the acronym wrong. The first, the first step is they come up with a design that basically says, if we were going to do an addition, here's what it would be. If we were gonna do a renovation, here's what it would be. If it's gonna be a full build, here's what it would be. And they present those to the committee. The committee kind of discusses, comes up with the, the recommendation, and then sends that recommendation up to the state. And then the state will come back and either say, consider some more things, or you're approved, now let's talk, start talking budgetary numbers and such. But May 7th will really be the next big update, and the building committee is meeting that, that evening as well. So they're actually gonna pick the architect and then drag him down 24 and have a meeting that night to introduce him to all of us and, and start talking.
Madam Chair, for you, I don't know the timeline for the project. Do, is there, has there been discussion?
Early estimates are, if, if things go according to schedule, which, you know, that works in government, anywhere from 12 to 18 months before they're coming to the member towns looking for funding. And the, the high watermark that they submitted to the state was $220 million, depending on how many programs they add. So currently, they're looking to add, their desire would be to add HVAC and plumbing, because they don't have those, so they can't consider themselves a full construction school unless they add those two. Dental assistant and biotech were the other two possibilities, but at the moment, they've hit the cutting room floor.
Wow. I know that this, we've been extended the opportunity for a tour. So I know we'll, we'll still work on that. I know I didn't look at my calendar yet to see, but I'd, I'd absolutely be interested in, in taking a look, so...
I, I was able to have one with Director Superintendent Polanski when I came back on the board last year. And it's worth seeing if you haven't. And then looking at what they have compared to what the state regulations actually are.
That's good. Well, thank you. I asked that going forward, because we did have a, another committee formed, which was the Town Administrator Search Committee, to be included in the updates. So they haven't been brought together yet, so we're just gonna leave that for now. But know that it's on here and that, you know, we'll get updates.
Madam Chair, can I ask, when is it going to start, though? I mean, we're really stretching this along.
I think it's next week.
Is it next week?
I think it was, the, the memo was next week, so, yeah.
Okay.
And I believe...
Madam Chair, the, we've reached out to the firm and asked them to provide us with a contract.
MRI.
Last time, they provided us with the contract. So Lacey has reached out to them to ask them for the contract. So hopefully, we'll get that back in. And then I know she said she has put together a meeting.
Yeah, that would, I mean, even if we didn't have the contract at that point, just having a meeting and everybody, you know, brought together to...
It is scheduled, I think, April 23rd or something.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Lacey's in the process of scheduling a meeting.
Okay.
With or without the contract, but I know someone from MRI will be at the meeting.
Oh, that's great. Great, so we're, we're stepping, stepping forward on that one.
Madam Chair, could we go back to the senior center addition feasibility study?
Yep.
I just wanted to mention, because I didn't, I didn't catch it until I was on the capital plan the other week, that, that the Director of the COA and Member Fabian reduced significantly the scope of the project down from, what was it, a $3 million project, down to a $250,000 project to provide pantry for, and, and access for making lunches and stuff like that. I just want to say how significant that is, and that is exactly, like, a really fantastic use of, like, creative thinking, kind of out of the box, in order to serve the people of Lakeville and in order to keep everyone's taxes as low as possible by not having to do a full-blown addition. I was very impressed with it. I hadn't heard it. I must have missed it in one of the meetings where she had told, like, how significantly, you know, to go down 10% of scope is just amazing. And I just wanted to commend anyone that had anything to do with that, because I think we're getting what the, the town needs as far as services, and we're not adding any pork into it. And I think it's very impressive to have that out-of-the-box conversation. So if she was here, I would tell her.
I'm sure she'll tune in. But thank you. I asked to put the next one on the agenda. I would like to schedule a Select Board Goal Setting meeting. I anticipate that this would be a two-hour... I anticipate that this would be a two-hour meeting for us, and this would be the primary focus, and I would like to task the board this evening, until such time that we schedule that meeting, to think of some goals that you, as an individual on this board, feel would be prudent for us to try to accomplish in the next year. And then I'm gonna have a conversation with Lacey Marshall, our HR Director, she's had training in goal-setting, I guess, workshops.
Facilitator.
Yes, facilitating them, so I'd like to bring her in, as part of the team, and invite, obviously, you know, Tracy and Christina to be, you know, part of the, you know, the meeting, because it affects the, you know, the Select Board's office. And then, because we are five members, I, in my mind, I think we would come up with five realistic, measurable, obtainable goals for the year, but we might decide that, you know, there might be three that we would like to meet. But this is goals for the board, not necessarily the town administrator. This would be our goals, and then, you know, those will kind of drive us a little bit, you know, as we navigate through the year. So, you know, look at your calendars, I'm thinking that we do have a hefty month ahead of us, I know we have four meetings scheduled coming up, three budget meetings, as well as another Select Board meeting, and then any subcommittees that we're representing, I know will be. So I guess maybe I'll ask the...
Do you anticipate this being before or after town meeting, since it is quite busy ahead of that, or...
I would, I would like us to start before town meeting.
Okay.
So by the time town meeting gets here...
So they may some time for our first meeting, and then...
Correct, yeah. Because I figure by the time town meeting gets here, it's gonna be summer, and, you know, it's gonna be a little difficult to try to, so if I could ask the town administrator's office to nudge us with some, you know, I would like to use the fire, the police station meeting room, so I guess that would be a good place to start.
If I may, ma'am, could we have one meeting where we bring our major topics in?
Brainstorm. That's it.
And then, then have that meeting, so that we all have a chance to say, okay, here are the topics I need to be thinking about.
Yep.
Because I think last year, when we tried this, we kind of came into the room cold and didn't know.
Yeah, and we were like, looking at it, like, okay, where do we start, kind of thing, so, okay. So our next meeting is the 22nd, so on the 22nd, you know, I'll just leave a little under old business this, and bring it back, and we can, you know, just share what we have, we won't deliberate on them, but we can at least pass them out, so that everybody has an idea of kind of where we're all thinking, and then we'll fine-tune it, and I'll work with Lacey on the structure of that meeting, so thank you. All right, any new business?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
I do have a text from Lacey, she said the TA Search Committee meeting is scheduled for April 24th at 6:00 PM at the COA.
Okay, April 24th, COA.
And it's a public meeting, so it will be posted.
Yes. Oh, great, thanks, Lacey, because I know she's watching. Okay, any new business?
I had a couple things.
Oh, sure.
I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at the Nemasket Weekly, I actually saw a copy of it here somewhere, it most definitely is, but Middleborough does a fantastic job at putting all the warrants in Nemasket, everything is in there, it was just really well-laid out as a communication tool with the residents. I would like us, as a board, to consider doing that.
Yeah, they advertise, so that would be the advertisement.
Yeah, so I think we do have...
We'll advertise Nemasket Weekly.
Yeah, I do think we have the budget, that we can support that, but I think that would be a really good use of our resources in order to connect with the people that are going to come, and then they can have their questions. We know social media is hit or miss with a lot of our residents, and I just would like to connect with people with where they are, and Nemasket Weekly seems to be filling that niche rather well, so, you know, fish where the fish are, a little bit.
Paper on record, yeah.
I'm almost 100% sure, a previous board voted not to place the entire warrant in advertising. We basically do just abbreviated one to say, to see the warrant, go to the town's website, and it's there, or you can get a copy at the town clerk's office. So that would require a vote to reverse the previous vote.
Yeah, and we absolutely can do that.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm just letting you know, it would require a vote.
No, it was very nice, I know exactly what, because I, you know, I looked and I saw it, and I know, at one point, I think we were doing that, but, you know, listing the whole warrant, all of them. It won't be 29 articles, I can tell you that.
You don't want to be there till 1:00 in the morning again.
Yeah, if I may.
Yes.
The warrant is, it's not a long warrant, it's special and the annual, I was working on it today, and there are other locations in town where it is posted, establishments. But if you want to advertise, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that it was, I'd love the board to consider it, because, and if you look at the Nemasket, you can see it, and the way that it's laid out, and it's a really good communication tool.
So you want to take a vote now, so we can move forward on that?
It's new business.
When you review the warrants.
It's under new business, it's new business, so we can vote.
Yeah, it should be a separate...
Yeah, we could vote now, we'd have to write a file, yeah.
So we can do that, or we can just add it to the agenda for next, on the 22nd?
Yep.
It would be cleaner if you put it on as an actual agenda item.
Yeah.
Would you do that, please?
And then, my other item would probably fall into the workshop for, but it's, I'm gonna beat this dead horse again, because I just can't help myself. I would like us to consider adopting a code of conduct for the boards and committees, and not only the boards and committees, but for the interactions with public in town. Based on the Supreme Court decision of last fall, we should really put something in place now. So I would like to send something to the TA, and, you know, and see if their office would like to work on it. It's a draft from some other towns. The one I'm thinking of specifically is the new one sandwich just passed, they had updated one, and they updated it again this week. I read parts of it in the newspaper, and I was really impressed with how thorough on how that's done, and they're also a partner with KP Law, so they're already, you know, aligned with the way KP Law would look at it, so I would like the board to consider something like that.
I think it definitely falls right in line with our goal-setting, to adopt a, you know, policy.
Yep.
So, excellent.
I'll get on that tomorrow, and we'll report back to the board.
All right. I had, before this meeting, I had met with, you know, Tracy and Mr. Nunes to go over the agenda, and I had asked Tracy if she wouldn't mind, because I had a feeling that it was gonna be a little difficult to take notes all the time about action items that would be coming out of this meeting, so Tracy's gonna make a list, and I know she had done this before, and it was really, really helpful in the office, so, you know, post-meeting, there'll be a list of all the action things that had come out of this meeting, and that that list will get shared with all of us, so that we haven't, we can kind of keep our minds, like, oh, okay, so we are gonna be talking about this next, or we did work on that, so, thank you, Tracy, for doing that.
I have one new business item that never, Candido, has done. Probably another workshop of some kind. So we've, obviously, a lot of volunteers elected and appointed, and I've noticed that, seen, last week during a meeting, there was a comment made that completely goes against kind of municipal government procurement procedures, so I think it'd be really good for us to do something, I don't know what that is, to help people that are coming in, giving us their time, say, hey, I know in the private sector, this works great, but there's very different rules when you're doing municipal procurement.
KP Law, sorry, Madam Chair, KP Law facilitates an education class such as that, and we get two classes a year for free?
Yeah, Bob and I were talking about that just today through email, although there was a request gone out about new employee orientation, new member orientation, and they provided a list, a current list of all of the courses that they have, and I believe we do get two opportunities. So I was gonna meet with Mr. Nunes to look at that list, and maybe identify based on what you were saying, because this is something that should be done maybe annually, because that is, because you get new members all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
And even, you know, previous veteran members, you know, might forget too, so...
The board's usually used it to triage, like, where it's like, where they see an issue, they're just like, this is the class that we're gonna pick for this year, so there's, like I said, there's two of them.
Do you happen to know if the menu had, like, the cost of each class?
No, it was just a menu, there was no cost.
Yeah, there's no cost.
Even though we might get to in our contract, we might still say, oh, this one's still worth it, based on current situations.
Right, yeah. So maybe we, maybe we pre, maybe we pre-have one, where we say, we have four, we won't have one next year, but, yeah.
Do you want me to forward that list to the Select Board?
Yes, please, that would be wonderful. Anybody else, Brian, would you like to bring up any new business? Okay. Under old business, based on the conversation that we had at our last Select Board meetings, it had come up about minutes and public recordings, because this is a public recording of activity that has taken place at a meeting. And one of the things that I know that has been a challenge for me is that when I've gone back and I've looked at other boards, committees, and commissions' minutes, I never know who drafted them, I never know who put them together, or when they were actually adopted, they just show up on the website. So I had asked Tracy to put together a sample of what it would look like, and I guess in my, in my mind, if we, and I actually spoke with our town clerk, Lily and Drain, about this, and she thought this was fantastic, because it does give, who drafted the minutes, so if there was ever a question about minutes that were prepared, we could be able to go right to that person, and also the date that it was approved, before it becomes up on...
Madam Chair, didn't we used to do this?
I think some, I think some, right, some people did this, but I would like to adopt this as a practice.
Got it.
You know, when I say citywide, townwide, going forward, and I can certainly have this come back, but I wanted to at least put the thought out there, because it came out of that last meeting that we had, and it resonated with me, and I said, you know what, now I think now would be a really good time to bring it up, and, so I think it would be nice to have a vote of the board, so I'll make sure that this comes back on the next agenda, yes.
Related to this topic, Tracy's excellent about doing this, others not so much. When you post the meetings on our website, by default, if your people, like us, Nutcases, is subscribed to those things, we just get, like, meeting minutes, meeting minutes, meeting minutes, meeting minutes, but when you get ours, it will say, like, Select Board Minutes for blah, like, in the title, like, I can't tell you, because very often, they'll upload them in batches, so then you just get, like, nine emails from, I'm just gonna pick on FinCom, because he used to be on it, right, you get, like, nine emails that just say, like, minutes, 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 where do I start? And then you sit there hunting and pecking through URLs to find the one that you're looking for, like, if we could, in addition to standardizing this, get all the people posting to standardize on, no, here's how you can help people, so that when they get those emails, it's got useful information in it, that'd be nice as well.
Yeah, that's really a good point. I know Tracy and I had a sidebar conversation that this might be something that we can, we haven't done this before, but bring all of the reporting secretaries, whether they're staff or, you know, volunteers, along with the chairs of the committees, to a meeting to talk about, you know, the etiquette of minutes, you know, because there's certain timeframes, and Lil, I mentioned it to her, she thought it was fantastic, that she would like to be there.
Yes, because she had just put out some postings about some of the minute stuff as well, so I'm sure that would be something.
Right, because it becomes, you know, their owner, they own it, right, the boards, committees, and commission, they own it, so this, I think, might be a really good time to bring it together, so I'll keep you posted as to, you know, if this, not if, let's just say, when this happens, but I'll work with Tracy on that, too, so. Anybody else in on this?
I have two items, if we're done with that item.
Sure.
If I may, the first one is, and since we have new members, the board had authorized me early to go and have conversations with, at the time, Chairman Knox, Director of Special Services, and Town Council on the idea of creating another 40R sub-district. So now with the loss of Chairman Knox, that kind of has died on the vine a little bit, so if the board would be pleased, I'd like to continue trying to do some of those investigations and conversations. We all received the email that another 40B is likely coming from the same developer, which we knew, but now it's real, it's coming, so I'd just like to, you know, keep digging on that, if I may.
Aye.
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 Need a vote. If anybody had concerns, we could talk about it at another meeting.
Did the planning board elect another chair yet?
They haven't yet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chair, tomorrow, I am meeting with the Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer, and the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, so, and if you would like to attend the meeting, it's at 4:15.
I may be able to do that.
If the board is authorizing.
It's just continuing, it's continuation, in my mind.
Member Day, as chairman, was very involved, as he said, with the previous chairman of the planning board, so that, that's one of the items we will discuss.
All right.
Excellent.
I mean, there's a lot of moving parts there, I just hate to see it kind of lose potential momentum.
Right, no, I agree.
Right, thank you.
And then you'd report that back to the board as a liaison.
Yep, okay, yep.
What I try to usually do is write up some minutes and send them back out, minus any opinion or anything.
Always good.
And then my second item was the subsidized housing index inventory. We talked about this a while ago, but really haven't revisited it. We're still listed at 250 units on the state site, the production plan that we just authorized was still 250 units, there's concern that there might be some missing ones, like upwards of 20 or 30 missing ones.
That's a concern.
Yes.
Is it because, Madam Chair, is it because it fell off, like, they aged out?
No, missing, missing new ones to be added in to that, so, you know, another meeting or so, we might want to discuss what is that process. I think, going back in time, Town Administrator Garbutt used to do that process, to keep track of everything, I don't know where that is now.
It's not housed at any particular place.
Town Administrator Candido did it as well.
So it had been with the Town Administrator's Office, I know some communities, their planner, and where we, you know, I'll break it with that position, it should be housed safely with the Town Administrator's Office, for now, but...
I believe it got delegated to the planner, and we no longer have the planner, and it looks like there's been no new submissions.
The information is on, Nate has all of that information.
Right, because of the...
That's where I pulled it from.
Right, so the Building Commissioner would have that based on occupancy, so we'd have a list of that, so I would, so I, maybe we direct it to the Town Administrator, you guys have enough to do already.
It's fine.
What's another thing, but...
I may be misspeaking, but is the TA also the reporting authority?
Reporting officer.
And when does that due per year?
September.
So, not too far off, believe it or not. It'd just be nice to make sure that we've got that wrapped up.
I can volunteer to help and kind of sift some of that out, especially with any of the reporting, because there were some anomalies in the reporting before that we kind of fixed up, and made a little bit better in 2019 and 2020, to get the full merit on there.
We're sitting at 5.71% right now, so I need a little bit of help. I'll take one if you find it.
We were at six and a half.
Then the new census came out.
All right, I think that's great. Member Candido, all right, we have some correspondence, I'm sorry, is that for old business, would you have, do you have some old business, ma'am?
I don't, but I do have to get going, I'm not feeling well.
Oh.
I will be missing at my next meeting, I'm away on the 22nd, but I will send you the goals that I had in mind.
Fantastic.
That would be fantastic, I appreciate that. Nope, thank you for coming out.
Good evening, hope you feel better.
Feel better. All right, as always, we have correspondence in here, those will be, hack it for reading pleasure. I did ask to include going forward a list just of the next meeting, because I know sometimes when I leave a meeting, and we voted or, you know, talked about dates, I'm all over the place by the next day, where I can't even remember what they were, so this looks right to me, April 22nd, at the police station at 5:30, and then the budget meetings where we will be meeting with department heads. Have we put together that schedule yet?
For?
The budget meetings for the departments?
Yes. Yes, I thought I mailed it, I mailed it, I will, yes.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
Bob, if you could just send it to me again, because I just want to make sure I have the right one, because I have a couple of versions.
I may have to make a change, but I will get that out.
Because I'd like to get those posted, and I need to post FinCom as well.
Yeah.
All right, so that's the 17th, 18th, and 25th at 5:30 at the senior center, so that'll be here, and, yeah.
The 17th, 18th, and 25th.
Correct.
The legislature hearings, yeah.
Yep. Okay, that should conduct... Okay, that should conduct, conclude all of our regular business at this time. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, a portion of land located at One Elliott Way, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to enter executive session. This is a roll call required vote.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. 7:45 concludes our regular open session meeting. So thank you, everybody.